Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Yes, now here we go again. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Oh, workshop order. First order of business is discussion and presentation of Landpasses Chamber of Commerce, third and fourth quarter reports.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just want to introduce Melissa Unger, who will be presenting her biannual report to y'all. I have reviewed all the receipts and all the data provided, and everything does concur with what you're supposed to do biannually with her documentation. So she'll go through everything with you. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask her.
Good evening. It's good to see everybody up here tonight. And so, as Becky mentioned, this is my third and fourth quarter report. I come twice a year to offset supplemental expenses for the visitor center. And what you have in front of you are all of my reimbursement receipts, along with some analytical data from our membership report, our website report, and also some of the publication information that is in here in regards to all of our visitors and the events that we put on, or support within the community. So if you have any questions, I will be happy to answer any of those at this time. Our numbers are up, which is good. We always like that. Financials are down, numbers are up. Like, expenses are down, so that's good. Alright, thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Discussion and recap from the development meeting.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You may recall back on October 11th, we had our first development meeting, if you will, where we invited various contractors and trades and surveyors and chamber representatives, and we did city advisory boards. So we had kind of a very large pool, if you will, of people who we invited. And we had a really good showing. We had about 20 people that attended. And for the most part, everything went well. We had positive feedback. As far as the actual talking points, we went through several items as far as processes and streamlining. And we went through stormwater pollution prevention. Just as a reminder, we went through the right-of-way permit process, which is relatively new to the building department in the public works. And we went through the utilization of MICA portal, which has really had a lot of success over the last few years. We're actually in the process of doing a developmental checklist, so that we're working on trying to, again, improve our processes. With regard to the planning and zoning with the building side, we went through whatever just hit our permits over the last year. We didn't have like that, as well as roof permits due to the hailstorm. And then since January 2020, we issued 162 new residential commercial building permits, which was pretty much a win for us. And we do encourage a pre-development meeting, as well as the pre-construction meetings. I think it makes a lot of the process a lot easier. All the expectations are kind of laid out. Everybody knows what to expect moving forward through the process. And as far as the MICA portal, again, we will have some resistance, but it has its convenience. They'll be able to issue their permits. We'll be able to go pay their permits online. They'll do their inspections online, see their work statuses of their projects online. So we're really moving forward with that. And you'll see later, when we get into the building report, how successful we have been. At least I felt a win. As far as back to the plan review, and we are trying to improve on the engineering side, architectural side, what to expect, making sure we're consistent, making sure we get new parking, the estimated landscaping, anything that we need for the requirements for a job. We're starting at the beginning, and we're going to work through and be real consistent in the documents we receive. And so I think it's really a very engaging process with the community, and I think we've gotten a lot of feedback for that so far. And as we move forward, we will go through and start doing scheduled quarterly meetings. We think it was really successful and want to continue to have that partnership. And then we'll continue education on the theme guidelines, which is a lot of things that came up within the meeting. There was a lot of questions that we need to still resolve and move towards and work on that process. And then educating on historic building codes as well. So if y'all have any questions, we'll be happy to answer any questions we might have, but our first one was very successful. At least we built it.
During the meeting, Mr. Kuker brought up a point about the FFE. Did y'all ever get back with him to clarify that a little bit? Because I know it was kind of un- it was kind of unbroken.
Right, and I don't know that we actually reached out to him specifically. I know we have done some research on it and tried to analyze and see how to make sure that everybody is on the same page.
Mayor and Council, the stormwater flood person for this region, I actually had a meeting with her and looking at how to get for contractors, you know, because I know that was a big ask. They brought up about the county, too. How do we know what that flood elevation is out in the county? So FEMA, with this meeting that I had with this, with our contact, basically, they've got maps that we can use, so it gives you a good idea of where that flood elevation is based on your property. And it actually prints reports, so I'll be glad to share that with Mr. Kuker. I have not reached out to him on that. This was probably later mid-last week when I had had a meeting with him. She's out of Austin, very knowledgeable. She's a floodplain licensed management, you know, certified individual. So a lot of good information, but stuff that we can share out with the contractors. It's really pretty neat because the map is newer data, so not what we have in our firm map from 1982 that was adopted. But this is new data that they've tracked. So the floodways and the delineation is a lot better. And when you pick on a spot on that map, when you're in one of those floodways, it can tell you what the 100-year and the 500-year is. So it's really good information, and I'll be glad to share that with him or whoever wants it. I think that's another one of those we wanted to bring back to our quarterly development meetings, so we can share with everybody, you know, and how to use it.
So on that new map for zoning, does it give you a baseline?
It gives you exactly where you can pick on the maps. You can put an address in. But the baseline is your 100-year and your 500. So it will tell you that exactly. Like, if it's 1,007, like, for example, over here, where we've been talking about the new development just on the other side of Public Works off of Fourth Street. So you can pick in those areas, and it will tell you what that exact elevation is. It's really good. Now, again, you know, the city has not adopted that. We've adopted the firm maps, and that's what we go by, but it's definitely useful information and something we might look at in the future, you know, adopting or looking into.
How much different is that than the firm maps? Is it just a lot more accurate?
It's newer data. I would assume more accurate. Because, I mean, from 1982 to now, I think all of us, we realize, hey, there's been a lot of development. There's new rooftops, more impervious area than there was prior to that. So I would say, you know, it probably is more accurate than a 1982 map, for sure.
What would we have to do to adopt it?
We would bring it, we could bring it back to Council if Council subordinates us. We could bring back information to a workshop, talk through, you know, show you how the map works. I could get more information from her as well. They actually have a ordinance kind of boilerplate that other cities have used to adopt that when they have older firm maps, so it's something we could definitely look into.
Do you want to talk about the letter of map provision?
I can.
Typically, the other way you would do a study, and then actually do a letter of map provision to FEMA for them to consider, you know, approving the new line if it has changed. The 82, 85 lines are lines on a map with some interval cross-sections at various locations. But you can't point at that line, and it doesn't say what elevation that is. It's a line on a piece of paper. But the typical process, for example, we went through in Landover, you hire an engineering firm that does a study, submits that study to FEMA. Typically, it's, you submit it, they have six months to respond. They respond, you have six months to respond back. And so it may be more complicated than just saying, okay, we're going to adopt this model that's on this map. And I would probably discourage that kind of, without some sort of study, because you can use some anecdotal information even in a study in terms of historic high-water marks, et cetera. So it can be fairly straightforward, but it can also be a drawn-out process. It might last as much as 24 months.
Thank you.
Next item up is discussion and recap from training session with Joe Chris Brown, City Attorney.
Mayor and Council, this item is placed on the workshop agenda as a recap from the proposed meeting that we had regarding the training that we had with the attorney. And this is the opportunity for y'all to discuss any development change, I'm sorry, any developmental, any kind of policy changes you would love to enforce with regard to implementing new processes defining all the rules of order. It might not be a standard practice. Refresh any open meeting pact or any other power of attorney procedure that may benefit the governing body, including management. So this just gives y'all the caveat to look and review. Anything that you learn, we would like us to review for you going forward.
Any questions? Number five, discussion regarding requests for top qualifications for Calvert Municipal Building for landscape design, irrigation, and landscape installation. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item is placed on the workshop agenda to do a couple of things. One is to describe the project, and the other is to outline the procurement method that we are proposing. We also want to let you know the areas that will be affected. So if you wanted to look back on page 52 of your council packet, that'll kind of show you the target areas that we would like to receive requests for proposals on, qualifications on. The whole concept here is we want to give everybody a neat playing field to put a proposal in to do this type of work. You can do that a couple of ways. One is you can hire a design professional. They can put together a design, and you can pass that design out to interested contractors, and then they bid on it. The other way you can do it is what we're suggesting here, which is a request for qualifications for a combination, someone that can come in and say, this is how you need to, this is the type of cultivar, the type of turf, this is the type of irrigation. These are our qualifications. And then they could design and install the landscaping according to a negotiated contract. We did go out and originally solicited a proposal for the design work, and the cost of that proposal, we felt like, was probably going to be on the order of, you know, 30 to 50% of the total cost, just at least in our head. And we didn't feel like that was a good value. It'd make more sense based on the scale of this project is to get someone locally, have them tell us what they want to do, make sure that they're qualified, try to negotiate with the highest-ranked, the most qualified firm that we can to bring you back a package. And that's what, that's what the draft in your packet assumes, is that we take this out and seek a request for qualifications from, basically, local or area firms to do this type of work. Just a couple of things I would point out to you on page 49. You know, in terms of what we're asking for, about two-thirds of the way down the page, the bullet list, that's kind of what our anticipated, but not necessarily. It could be subject to some change, our list of scheduled deliverables. The thing that Council need, we need to be clear on is that we're not asking you to select someone tonight or an amount tonight. We're just asking you for a green light to advertise this RFQ. We would then, once we negotiated with the highest-ranked firm, bring you back that contract for your consideration at that time. We will ask you, in the regular agenda, there is a corresponding item for you to provide us that green light to go ahead and advertise this RFQ. Be happy to answer any questions on that.
Any questions? The $250,000, is that, all of that is earmarked for landscaping irrigation?
No, that's earmarked for the Calvert building. That would also include probably what we'll do next, which will be an RFQ or an RFP for the basement, wall finishes, electrical lighting, et cetera, down below. And even that, even though that is an earmark, that doesn't, I would anticipate that you're not going to spend all of that on those two projects for the Calvert building. Number six, discussion and update related to water supply emergency agreement and possible requests for wholesale water contract amendment and possible conveyance of water infrastructure around storage tanks. I spoke with the mayor a little bit earlier, and I said I originally started this as a report item. And I think a couple of things have happened over the last six months. We've had, I think, very positive increased communication with Kenton Water Supply Corporation. I think we've got a number of different items that's kind of floated to the top as potential opportunities for us to discuss collaboration or opportunities for us. But before really I get into this, I do want to also recognize Bruce Orson, who's the new general manager for Kenton Water Supply Corporation. He's in the, in the audience and hopefully wait till you. But anyway, it's been, for those of you that have been around for a while, Councilman Williamson knows that we've, we've been, we've had our disagreements in the past. Not to say that we still don't support our positions very strongly, but it is refreshing to have some open lines of communication. I'm going to follow along primarily the memo that is included in your packet. And I apologize, I've tried to put about five or six different things within this memo, but just to start out with the water study, just to let you know that we did meet with Jason Jones. He was kind of the final link in terms of going over the water study scope that, or the draft scope that I had originally given to you. We are hopeful that we might have a proposal to look at on or around the November 13th meeting. As a reminder, scope will include current conditions, alternatives related to surface and groundwater, available capacities and frozen combs, treatment technologies. I think Jason is an appropriate party to take a look at this scope, and I think Council's pretty familiar with the detail of his work. And we look forward to taking a look at the proposal once we receive it. Emergency agreement, this is something that we have talked about previously. That was forwarded to Kenton Water Supply Corp. on October 11th. The draft was prepared by our legal counsel on this matter, Natasha Martin, Grace Zordi. I'm pleased to say that on October 19th, we did receive the response from Kenton Water Supply Corp. And it was generally, their comments were generally non-substantive or formatting correction. So what you've got in your packet actually is one of two attachments to this agenda item, is that emergency agreement, and we'll kind of run through that here in just a second. Before we do that, I do want to suggest that this is just one of several contingencies both Kenton and Central Texas are working on in terms of making sure that we continue to push water to the west and to Landpasses. The emergency agreement, again, that begins on page 56 of your packet. And I'm going to go start really with page 58, Article II, which kind of highlights several of the bullet points that I, and I don't read this to you or go through each one, but I do want to call your attention to a few of them. Again, the position of the city is that this is an emergency temporary contract that is put into place under very specific conditions that are agreed to by the parties. I think item B, even though we may change the wording just slightly, I think it's important, it was certainly important from the city's position to make sure that this in no way changed or altered our 2006 wholesale water contract. But we think is the, this is a temporary agreement, and it has no impact on 2006 or the requirement for Kenton to enforce their 2005 contract with Central Texas. D just specifies that this, and implies that this is a temporary contract that has to be renewed for those different periods of time, 60 days. On to page 59, again, I just want to point out some things that we thought were important. Is that, once, item three on page 59, once the emergency is confirmed, basically, what we're talking about is the difference in the water Central Texas can't deliver to us versus what they can provide us in addition to that. Also says in G, we will continue to utilize whatever conservation measures that are in force. They are provided, they are required to provide us water quality at the level of the 2006 wholesale contract. And that we, if it's no longer needed, we can discontinue this service. Turning to page 16, again, I'm just going to highlight a couple of things. The rates under Article 4A would be the rate that they are currently paying their WCID contract, which is one of the contingencies Kenton put into place through their interconnection agreement with WCID Bell County, at $2 per thousand. On E, again, we pay them, this is a separate contract from the 2006 wholesale contract, so we're paying them separate and apart from the requirements of the 2006 contract. Just a couple of other quick things. Again, we reinforce that it is a temporary item on page 61 under Article 6A. This is a draft that I guess I would consider a 90 to a 95% draft. Certainly with rainy weather, we, maybe we're all kind of taking a little bit of a breath, you know, hopeful that things will change. But I think if Bruce was standing at the podium, he would tell you that the water level is still 604, 603. It's, if you have not been across that bridge over Still House, I would encourage you to do that if you ever go east, because it's pretty dire. That being said, again, this is one of several contingencies that Central Texas and Kenton are both working on. And I would encourage your consideration either to have us do 100% and bring it back to you, or give the city manager the authority to negotiate and finalize the agreement at your prerogative. Are there any questions on the emergency agreement? Yes, you certainly always had the opportunity to do an additional one if both parties agreed to do so. I think it was important, my perspective, hopefully the city's perspective, that this be couched as a temporary emergency agreement. This is nothing that is, you know, if we want to talk long-term changes, we can do that, but at this point in time into these conditions, this is what it is, so. But that's a good question. Mayor, I'll carry on then. Contract amendment, another item that has surfaced in our discussion has been an amendment to our 2006 water contract, which I think is going to require a little more work. This is a contract the city of Landpasses first proposed to Kenton in 2012 as a result of them being concerned about not being able to match gallon-for-gallon the water that was brought in from Central Texas and the water that we received at our points of delivery. Contract stipulates the water is cold-negled, and it is, it is absolutely impossible for them to take gallon-for-gallon from Central Texas and what is delivered. Even though they have control of the bow, it's something that just, so we proposed this amendment when that was raised as a concern. And really, that is the question that led to the 2013 litigation that was eventually settled in 2019. They didn't want to agree to this amendment because they felt they already had the right to charge us the water from their plant. It is now something that is, again, floated to the top. I don't think it's an unreasonable thing to look at. And in some cases, I think there may be some advantages. For example, if one plant or the other is having trouble treating a certain type of water, when we get a rise on the river right now, I guarantee it'll be more difficult to treat the water than if it's normal and you don't have as much suspended solids, et cetera, in the water. So I think there are some advantages. I think it's a reasonable thing to consider. We certainly haven't dusted this off for 11, 12 years now, but I think the premise is probably reasonable up to a threshold. And I think the threshold was 25%, no more than 25% in one month, nor 5% over the course of a year. And again, those were the terms in 2012 when it was first presented. So again, we wouldn't buy any more than 25% of our water needs for one month from Kenton Water Supply Corporation, nor would we buy more than 5% of our needs over the course of that year. Again, we haven't dusted this off. We haven't asked our council now to put their 2012 hats back on and start looking at it. But I don't think it's an unreasonable thing for us to look at. Certainly, this is, this is a, an amendment to a contract that was negotiated over a period of years. So I think certainly my advice to the council is that we take our time and make sure that it is well-vetted, and any change that we make to this contract is for until 2084. I'd be happy to answer any questions on that. I want to talk just a little bit about conservation. And while I think all parties have been very effective in conservation levels, I think we've seen anywhere from 30 to 40% reduction where we were the use that we had a year ago. We do need to talk a little bit about some of the side effects that we're seeing. As we use less water, that means the water that we do have in the line stays in the line a little bit longer. And it's kind of counter what we're trying to do, because we'll have to go out and flush lines, just like Kenton is having to do, to flush lines, keep fresh water, and maintain a disinfectant residual in our, in our water. One thing that we have been talking about is the possibility of doing some limited ability to irrigate. We would rather people be able to put this water on their lawns and thus flush it out of a hydrant, down a drain. Now, we're still always going to have to do some amount of flushing, but that is an item that we certainly have been talking about, as well as Kenton has also been talking about dusting off the plants for possibly an injection site at the Ivy Mountain tank. I think you've got water, particularly in our main break, we talked about, you know, having 24, 25 miles of empty water line that we had to fill and get back. You know, that's, that's the length of distance this water has to travel, plus keep a relatively decent residual. By the time it hits our points of delivery, we do have at least some sort of a failsafe in our injection sites. But that's another thing that I think we want to be talking with Kenton about, particularly on the 580 side. Any questions on that?
So I was wondering about that, because it seems, it does seem like, I know that we need to flush, but it seems kind of like a waste. So how, like, would it be certain areas of town where the flushing has to be, that you would open up? And how would you get that information out?
I think, and I would probably defer to our water experts, as well as Bruce, but my, my thought was you would need something that would be, you wouldn't want to do it, you know, everybody can water once every two weeks. You would want something a little more spread out, so you would probably take a look at maybe a four, you know, one section of town one week, one section of town another week, so you have that kind of constant flush. And I would assume Kenton would probably look at it. probably look at it the same way. We'd be much better off if we had a consistent use of water as opposed to one week, we're gonna, you know, everybody's gonna water, but, again, I, I would defer to our water experts on that.
One of the other things too, I think we talked about, uh, was making an investment in a, a looping system and looping the lines together, we wouldn't have to make those, uh, flush.
You bet, and we're, we're always, uh, you know, I don't know how many looping projects we've got on the table right now, four or five of them, Ryan. So, we, we always have those projects on the table. We've got a couple of the things that are in engineering right now.
Yeah, two of these is here.
Uh, so yes, so yeah, absolutely, Mayor, I think that's, uh, that's a point well taken. You know, if we can, if we can tie two dead-end lines together, uh, it, it makes that water a lot fresher, gets full from two different directions.
I was also wondering too, like, if, because it's going to take a little bit to get the information out, or like you said, you've got to talk to the water, the water experts. Um, is, is there a way to use, like, is, when they flush or when you go to flush, if they could do something where that water would go into some kind of tanks or something? Or like?
About the, you know, the only, I, I think the most realistic way is if we say, okay, any bulk water sales, you've got to take from the west end of town or from a hydrant there, I think it'd be the most reasonable way to do that. Otherwise, it's very difficult for an individual to go out there and catch it in a trash can or a bottle or anything like this, um, can't do it that way. But, I think we can certainly encourage, uh, if we are doing some bulk water sales, uh, maybe it's not the hydrant right next to your project, you've got to go to the hydrant out here to fill your tank. Want to talk just briefly about, uh, the Georgetown Tank, and this is, all this was was a discussion. It's been a discussion over the last 10 years, about once a year and once every other year. It is a, a tank that is considered a covered tank by the contract, meaning that, uh, both, uh, the city and Kentner, uh, pay for maintenance and repair on this tank, so, uh, the last time it was done, I believe, was 2021. At that time, I think Jason also did some piping to try to encourage more circulation in that, uh, tank, uh, but it was rehabbed within the last, uh, three or four years. The, the interesting thing is that tank, uh, contractually, uh, the city has the capacity in the tank, Kentner does not have any capacity in that tank. And I think we've talked about it from time to time as maybe being, uh, more valuable to us than it would be, than, than Kentner sees value in it. And so, uh, if that is, uh, something that, uh, council is open to, I think there probably are some advantages to us, uh, taking that tank over, provided that Kentner is willing to convey it to us. Uh, again, we have all the capacity in that tank according to our contract. Uh, they do have, I believe, about 27 customers that are being fed off of that tank to the, I believe it's kind of that Southern Oaks area, uh, but that's something that came up in our discussion as well. We, we just bring this forward to you, if, if somebody stands up right now and says, "No, don't talk to any, any Kentner anymore about anything, Georgetown Tank or anything", I want to hear from you, but, uh, we're just trying to spread this information to you and certainly if you have some input, uh, one way or the other, we'd be anxious to hear that. The other thing we also have talked about is a future meeting. Typically have had, you know, by contract, we're supposed to have a true-up meeting once a year. Uh, typically those were held in March, and, uh, but to be honest with you, that blew up one year, I think it was 2014. I don't know, uh, Councilmember Williamson remembers that meeting, but, uh, and we just haven't sat down, and I don't know that we needed to or wanted to, uh, since that time, but, uh, certainly Bruce and I have talked about that opportunity coming up, maybe first part of the year, January, February, and I would certainly encourage council to, uh, sit down at their board and, uh, go over that annual meeting again. We aren't really using it as a true-up anymore because we're paying on actual, we don't have a lot of bills that we have to reconcile with an annual meeting. Uh, there may be a couple, but typically we, if, if there's a discrepancy in the bill, we deal with it that month, uh, so I think it'd be more of an informational and information sharing as well as a problem-solving meeting. But, I've, uh, I've thrown quite a few things at you, uh, uh, this evening, but I think they're all, uh, very timely and very important, and I'd be interested in any input you have.
On the Georgetown Tanks, um, how do you feel about that coming back into, into the Lampasses?
I, I think there would be some advantages, but what I would advise council to do is direct me to get an engineering report on that tank and make sure that, uh, we're not accepting a liability that has no value to us. Uh, so I, I would, I would, uh, that, that would be my encouragement to you, at least at face value, I think there are, would be some advantages, particularly as Jason maybe outlined in our, uh, our water model plan for the upper pressure plane.
Okay. If that was going to come up in that study?
Yes, it had, it, yes, and it was a part of it, uh, as well as the ability. The elevation of that tank is a little deceiving, it's higher than, than you think, as it relates to our other pressure planes, so, um, but again, we don't want to go in, uh, without taking a hard look at it and making sure that, you know, you're not, you're not buying a, a chair with only two legs. Any questions on any of the items I've gone over? Uh, again, I'd, I'd want to, to recognize Bruce, I, uh, Mayor and I don't know if, if he had some comments to make, if you, if that's appropriate.
Absolutely, sure, love to hear from him.
Anything I said, uh, said is all based?
No, I'm looking forward to, uh...
Come on up.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to working with Lampasses on, on all these issues. Uh, obviously we haven't had a good relationship in the past, but I think we've gotten past that and we're ready to move on to the future and what's going to happen. Uh, I think there's a lot of good things going on with Kentner, our capacity has almost doubled, so we can deliver more water. Uh, the rea- the reason why we won the injection site is because times like right now, we need to add more, more into the system so we're able to deliver you proper water. Other than that, you know, the state mandate, regulations we're following, so everything's in order, it's just we want to give you the best water we can. So that's what we want to do. Kentner wants to just, you know, be on the map as far as being a better supplier of water, uh, and that's what I'm hoping for our future.
Any questions?
Appreciate you coming.
Anything else for me, Mayor, council?
Any more questions?
You, you do have a, an item on the regular agenda if you would like to proceed with, uh, with the emergency water agreement.
Thank you. Discussion regarding any items on the regular agenda? We'll adjourn the workshop session, uh, anybody need a break? We'll call a regular workshop, work, we'll call a regular council meeting, the work. All right.
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we can't be more thankful for the moisture on the ground, the clouds in the sky, and the continued forecast. Thank you for being with us and not forgiving us, and thank you for those who gave us this little faith that, uh, some rain's on the way. On the other side of the world, we pray that you be with those less fortunate than us that are in harm's way in the Middle East. Please be with those that have passed, be with those in harm's way, and be with those that make decisions, and peace can come sooner than later. Here in our little piece of earth, we thank you for where we're at, we thank you for this great community, we thank you for our city employees, our elected officials, and all of our public that are here tonight. We ask that we can all get together and make the best decisions for our whole community, as that be your will. As always, Lord, we ask that you be with us in safety, that we can meet, meet again, and watch over us, forgive us of our sins, and in heaven's name, amen.
So, I give the blessing. Blessings, Jesus, as the United States of America, to the Republic, which is standing as one nation, under God, and with one, with liberty and justice for all. Honor with that flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and
At this time, we'd like to have some service recognitions. No, no one's here. William McYoung, five years. Dustin Roscoe, five years. Tyler Gillis, 10 years. JP Harris, 25 years. Want to say thank you to this, uh, group of hard-working people, and if you see them out tomorrow, give them a thanking. And this is a court week, November the 6th, I'm sorry, November 6th through the 10th. A resolution recognizing the importance of municipal courts, the rule of law, and the fair and impartial administration of justice. Whereas municipal court plays a significant role in preserving public safety and promoting quality of life in Texas. Whereas more people come in contact with municipal courts than all other Texas courts combined, and public impression of the Texas judicial system is largely dependent upon the public's experience in municipal court. Whereas the city of Lampasses is committed to the notion that our legal system is based on the principles that an independent, fair, competent jury will interpret, apply the law that governs us, and the judges, and the court personnel should comply with the law and act in a matter that promotes public and confidence and integrity and impartiality of the jury. Whereas municipal judges are bound by the law and the canons of the judicial conduct and are required to make decisions independent of the governing body, body of the city council, city officials, and employees. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Lampasses, Texas, that the week of November the 6th through the 10th, 2023, is hereby recognized as a municipal court week in recognition of the fair and impartial justice offered to our citizens by the municipal court of Lampasses. Passed and approved on the, this 23rd day of October, 2023.
Oh, Jeff, I ran into him.
You gotta stand in the middle.
Okay, I'm standing in the middle.
It's gonna be a fun week, right?
We have a difficult time, it's a steep learning curve, and so appreciate taking a few minutes to show, sure appreciate.
Thank you.
Thank you, we ran off for a split minute.
Yes.
She's helping.
Tonight, community champion recognition. Nominated by Anna Shedd. Though due Lampasses, Ashley has connected business and community. She recently proposed the Love Thy Neighbor Day, which brought our small town even closer. People were just excited to be a part of this movement that encouraged them to simply love their neighbor. She allowed God to work through her business and her personal life to shine a light on others. Ashley is an active member of the Lampasses community and business scene as well. She is regularly helping businesses find service, connecting other members to each other. She has really become a bridge for the city of Lampasses and to the small business that keeps our beautiful town unique. Ashley, we are pleased to recognize you as a Misty Talbot Community Champion. One thing I'd like to say too about Ashley is, Ashley is one that never promotes herself, she's always promoting the city of Lampasses, and I think we're very, very fortunate to have Ashley in our community. Ashley, thank you very much. She'll come forward.
So you're surprised? Don't get away, so you get your audience up here. I don't have a speech or anything. Come on, let you jog. Come on.
Tell it, you don't get to lie, run to the back there.
Yeah, that comes from short. There we go.
I'm trying to. It's, this is what I look like, unfortunately.
The lone male. Oh, no.
Congratulations.
I just want to say my last prayer.
Good job.
So good.
included on the agenda, they do so at this time.
The city may not deliberate on items presented under this agenda. Citizen comment, any citizen who desires to address the city council on a matter that is included in the agenda, they do so at this time. Public hearing to receive citizen's comment to consider a request to rezone point oh three eight acres of land out of the Hillcrest addition, Lot One, Block Five, Lampaces, Texas. Counting from two-family residential duplex SF two to commercial C.
Good evening, Mayor Council. The property owner is asking for consideration to rezone this property from two-family duplex to commercial. And you may recall that it's been commercial primarily, then it's gone duplex, and now we're putting it back to commercial. It's been through a couple of property owners. They just haven't been able to develop the property as of today. And so we're likely that we're going to get this developed finally, and after a few years of being on the market. And this is the property. It's on one ninety in Hillcrest. It's right there next to the nursing home, so you'll recognize the actual location of it. The area around it is very private, is mixed use. The property is shared by retail, single-family, residential SF six, single-family SF ten. All notifications or publications that are required by ordinance and section have been made. Staff mailed twenty-five minutes to property owners within two hundred feet of the applicant's property, and no letters are received in favor or in protest of the request. The area is identified as traditional residential, neighborhood retail, and portal commercial office professional retail in the comprehensive plan. This request was brought before the planning commission on October twelfth, and they did recommend approval. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Discussion and possible action concerning the approval of minutes of the regular meeting held on October ninth, 2023.
I saw no changes, recommend approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion and possible actions of the conserving, the approval of minutes of the special meeting held on October sixteenth, 2023.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. I saw no changes, recommend approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any notes?
Nope.
Discussion and possible action regarding the second reading of an ordinance to repeal an ordinance sixteen ninety-six of the City of Lampaces Code of Ordinants, Chapter fifty, Article two, perfunctum minors, repealing any inconsistent provisions and providing an effective date for H.G. eighteen nineteen, Section three seventy point oh oh seven, juvenile perfunctum.
Recommend approval of consent agenda?
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Four point oh. Board Department report? I'm looking.
Good evening, Mayor Council.
You might as well talk.
Yes, sir.
So this evening, we're presenting our Building and Planning Department annual report. It's going to go from October of twenty twenty-two through September of twenty twenty-three. So I want to introduce our staff. So we have Frank Ellitt as our building official. Myself is the city secretary zoning administrator. We have Lippi Charpin, who is in the audience, as our admin and permit technician. And we have Mike Blair, who's our civil inspector, and he also assists with city projects as well, kind of overseeing them in the field. So this is a slide I've used a couple of times, but I think it's very informative. So it kind of talks about our day. So we do a lot of educating. So we do a lot of planning, zoning, land use, building codes. Can you hear me? Sorry. Okay, so when we go through the education process, we do a lot of the plating and then the zoning, land use, and building codes. We educate the developers, we homeowners, and realtors. Anybody that calls in has any kind of inquiries, we go through and walk them through the process. And the building code, of course, is a middle living baseline standard. And we do have some that'll call and inquire about their home sit exemption, because some that have a home sit exemption can do work on their own by pulling a permit. We don't expect them, but we still expect them to be up to code as well. And we go through a preliminary plan review by professional design specialists typically. Sometimes it might be an architect or an engineer, but we do do preliminary plan reviews to kind of get an idea of what their concept plan might be. And utility availability is something else that we cover. So if they come in with a concept, they have, I want to do this, let me know what the utility availability is. So I'll let, see if there's any water or electric sewer, where it is in proximity. Do we need to extend these services? So I send them out to the guys of the survey typically, let them know what I'm looking for, and they'll come back to me and let me know, yes, it's available, no, it's not, that's all you could do. You know, we might have to extend some services, what have you. And it'll give me an estimated cost of what it would take to get utility to that property. And code enforcement is another thing that we enforce as far as, um, not only building code, but also things you see out in the field. So, um, Mr. Ellitt also works really closely with Mr. Vario from the police department, and they work hand in hand as well. Meetings, we give onsite meetings to discuss project card permitting, pre-construction meetings with staff, D.C. developers and trades. We feel that is just unbelievably helpful. And it's just something that we really stress, because it's just, like I said, it helps alleviate any questions we have when it goes through the actual inspection process. And sign gives it with trade card construction start date. And we'll do quarterly development meetings starting now. So we had our first on October eleventh. We will continue to do those as well going forward. I think it's of value to our community. And inspections, Mr. Ellitt as well as Mr. Blair, they go out and they do well with doing same-day inspections. Sometimes it may not happen till the next morning. It just kind of depends. And we do our best not to hold up any contractors with their job. If it comes down to taking a picture, it'll help us facilitate that process. We'll do that. We'll take, give me a picture, show them what you're doing, so we don't have to hold you up and move on to the next step. And we do several re-inspections. They'll call in, they'll say they're ready, but they're really not ready, or they're kind of kind of ready. So we'll go out and do a courtesy re-inspection for them. And but it does get very cumbersome at times. And then, of course, a punch list. And we go out to do the final CO inspection, which is certificate of occupancy inspection. There will be times when there will be some items that are left out that need to be re-looked at, reevaluated, and they might not be done up to snout. So we'll have to go in there and we'll have to have it re-done at a time before we issue that CO. So this slide here just represents the paper permits. So this is kind of where I wanted to kind of show you how we've done with the paper, which we do on in-code versus our online process. So for the total paper permits by type, we have like electric occupancy is our top permit that we do, our project. And then next to it is going to be the roof. And this is just for this year. They've changed a little bit. Typically, our trades are pretty high. And we'll go through a lot of those that need to have a service upgrade, or they need to do something different, add a plug here, or do some remodeling. So electric is always going to be a big one, just like plumbing. And new roofs is something because of the hailstorm in November. So we got inundated with lots of permits from November through February. This is the total MICA portal permit. So you can see the three hundred and forty-six from the roof. We sent every contractor that came in between November and December, we said, go to the portal. Go online, set up an account, and do this. Because a lot of them were from out of town anyway. They came in and did a little pop-ups and tried to get business. So they were familiar with the process. It was easy. It was easy win for us. It was easy win for them. So three hundred and forty-six is what came in for roofs for this time period. And you can see that the others are really smaller in comparison. However, for four hundred and ninety-three permits on MICA, it's very impressive for us, because we were averaging maybe about ten a day. So it's really improved, and we're excited to see where that takes us. I'm sorry, ten a month, not ten a day, ten a month. So overall, like I said, it's pretty equal, if you like, for four hundred and some from online and about four hundred and some on paper. So here it shows you the actual trend again through the MICA portal. We'll see December, January, and February were the highest months because of the fact that all the roofs that came in for those permits because of the hailstorm. So the combined permits issued by month, this kind of shows you how we are fluctuating as far as how we perform every month. But again, over this last year, we've done over eight hundred and ninety-three permits that have been issued for projects in the city. So December, January, and February again are going to be high because of the roofs. And of course, March, they peep up at the one seven hundred and fifteen. And I think a lot of that is just seasonal. It just happens to the time where they're starting to do the, it's getting to be better weather. They want to go out and do the remodel projects, outside projects. So again, we just fluctuate each month. The inspections by month, we average anywhere between fifty and sixty per month, which is probably a really low number, because we don't always necessarily calculate every time we go out in the field and we talk to somebody. So if, you know, Frank goes out and does a consult, or if he goes out and talks to somebody, does a re-inspection, or kind of goes through, walks them through the process, those aren't counted. These are just actual documented on paper where we did an inspection. So project data, I kind of want to go through this with you as well. So the remodel permits that we have listed, those consist of a remodel addition. So if someone's remodeling their interior of their home, if they're adding on a bathroom, if they're adding on an extra room, that's going to be all the remodel addition permits. But it also could do flatwork, you know, your patio, your slabs, anything curb cut. Anything that is in nature will follow the remodel as well. And storage buildings, they fall under there. So of the electrical category, we have twenty this year that did solar panels. It's not as frequent as it used to be. I think it's kind of died down a little bit, but we still get quite a bit of traction from people wanting solar panels. And as noted before, the roof permit equal to almost half of the remodel permits issued during the November hailstorm. So if you look overall, all the permits we did this year, about half of them were roof-related. Um, new homes, new construction and remodel, kind of this one consistent as a caveat. So while it may be category as a new home, there's also going to be segments in there. So under the new home permit, you're going to have your electrical, your plumbing, your mechanical, that'll fall under there as well. Same with your remodel. So anybody remodeling a bathroom, they have to pull a plumbing permit and an electrical permit because of the work that they're doing with their scope of the project. Some might not be doing trades, just kind of new ones. So over this last year, we had thirty-four new homes that were built. These are just some of the contractors that have done more than one, if you will. We've had several contractors that just do one or two, but Stone Valley, Hillside Acres, Homely House for Homes, um, Farm Farce for New Reconstruction, or KJ Gaverty Estates, they've done more, or the majority of the homes are the last year. So for commercial new buildings and additions, remodels, we had Starbucks, we had our skate park, sensational storage addition, storage near a meat and retail strip center, and then anytime fitness. Some of them are still open. They're all closed, but those are projects that we worked on for a commercial standpoint. So this kind of defines your new businesses. So we've had all these new businesses that have come in this last year. So Starbucks, Western Avenue Dogs, Red Barn Garage, the Mexican Cuisine, Firewood Stand, Blue Rose Salon, Lynch Creek Homes, NBC Engineers, and then Central Texas Behangos Solutions. We've also had some that have relocated. So like Lettuce Beauty's Man was on Street One, they moved over to Fourth Street. So while Ben Chungseth was on one ninety, they moved over to two eighty-one. And the Cooley Law and Order Attorneys, they were on Fourth, they moved over here to Third. Corey Best and Electric, I'm not really sure where his base was originally, but he's now on one ninety. He shares the property with Wright Fencing and TK Wright, all his fixing and pools. Turquoise and Texas Batik, they originally opened on Key Avenue when they moved to the square. Scoundrel's Barbershop, it was over on Fourth Street and moved over to the, um, Santa Fe, thank you. Santa Fe Shopping Center, he does talk. Did y'all hear that? Did y'all hear? He did. And Hodgson Sergeant Pharmacy, they moved next door. So they bought the old bank, they remodeled it, they moved in. And now we have a engineering firm in the old Hodgson Sergeant building. And then their brother Plumbing, and they're still getting things done, but they moved over to, um, on Fourth Street. They used, there's several little shops in there on the corner of Fourth and Brown. They actually bought that, um, property. So they moved from Hackberry and Fourth over to that property is where they're going to actually have a business. So it's still a work in progress. Um, planning and zoning. So we've had ten meetings this year, twenty-two public hearings, a hundred and eighty-four certified letters were sent out. And the type of requests, we had nine reason requests, four specific use permit requests, five plot approvals, two amendments to zoning statutes. For zoning board of adjustments, we had three meetings, three public hearings, and forty certified letters were sent. Reduction in depth from one ten to one oh four, reduction in parking from one seventy-six to eighty-eight, and a variance specific to the Section thirty-six off-street parking and loading requirements. Do you have any questions? Adopted ordinances, this is going to list, I'm not going to go through them all with you, but these are ones that have gone through the planning commission, and then they've come to you after final approval, and those are the ordinances that we've adopted. So there's been several rezones. We've had some amendments to our zoning regs, and we added Business Park. We've actually went ahead and zoned the Business Park, gave them some distinctions out there. And some MTPs we did recently for some portal buildings to be sold in one ninety, and then for the daycare on Western. So this is another slide that I've used before, because I think it's valuable, kind of to show you the difference between the zoning regulation versus the building code. So the zoning regulations of the city of Lampaces zoning reg was adopted in nineteen ninety-nine. So this is a reading document. We go through it, analyze and review, and do what we can to try to improve processes, but it takes time. Um, zoning regs are designed to regulate land use inside the city limits, which includes all residential and commercial uses. And then zoning regs are amended via ordinance, which were recommendations from the planning commission and adopted by city council. The building codes are adopted by ordinance, and the adoption codes can include any city amendments. So if there's anything in there that the building official or our construction board feels we need to make a little of an exception or amendment to the building codes, we can put that in there as well. The set minimum baseline standards are for new construction in Nixis. And then currently, we are going through the twenty twenty-one IBC, IRC, and IPC, twenty twenty NEC, and then the twenty fifteen Energy Code. So I want to talk a little bit about the comprehensive plan, because this is important, and I try to relate everything that we do in the planning and building world back to the comprehensive plan as we should, so we don't keep it on the shelf. So our short-term goal, and one of this that we've been working on quite heavily is our substandard properties. So this is a short-term goal of one to two years. So it's to strengthen the enforcement and incentives throughout the city to maintain the quality of neighborhood and character, remedy the over restructuring and disrepair. So since January of twenty twenty-three, staff has made contact with close to fifty sub-skinner property owners. Owners have been very receptive to the initiatives, as I've reported before. And some property owners have begun rehabilitation. Several are kind of prepping to sell their lots. And then ten properties have actually been demolished on their end of port. And this one is to undertake comprehensive analysis of the city zoning subdivision and other land use regulations and consider opportunities for upgrades and to provide more consistency, clarity, and compatibility with existing uses. So staff has been, used to review the subdivision and zoning regs, once a draft recommendation and approval has been defined, it'll be presented to the planning commission, construction board, and city council for adoption and approval, one for consideration. A midterm goal, which is three to ten years out, this is one that we're working on currently now that we've discussed in our business development meeting that we had previously, is to consider a comprehensive update to the city zoning subdivision and other development regulations to implement recommendations that get in front of the comp plan. So this is going to go back to our streamlining, our processes, trying to define ways of making our processes better, our process more fluid with going out to the contractors, the developers, working more of a streamlined process, not only for staff, but also for the developers as well. And this is another thing. We did the utilization of the permit portal, so make sure that we are actually doing everything online, because it streamlines that process. And we don't have paper copies. We don't have some online. Everything is handled through the portal. And then this is going to, of course, having those quarterly meetings will strengthen our partnership and facilitate community education for staff, improve our workflow, and identify gaps in processes in the staff. So this is the other prob, the other project that we've been working on from a building and planning perspective. It's going to be our wayfinding master sign program. So in the comprehensive plan, this is considered a midterm goal, three to ten years. However, we're making a lot of progress. And so it was cited in both two point two five and four three four, where we want to do the wayfinding signage program for downtown and to wayfinding signage in key areas of the city as a whole. So Studio sixteen nineteen was awarded a contract in October of twenty twenty-two. The most recent sign rankings were provided in July of twenty twenty-three. The bid construction phase is scheduled for November, December, and then construction ended phase is to begin January and February. I don't have an update for you this evening as far as the processes. We're still able to have a meeting next week, so I'll know more of what we're doing. But I'm still working on the wayfinding on Key and for our downtown. This is where we're kind of at right now. So our challenges. So of course, the MICA online portal, we've been doing it for a little over two years. There is some resistance. Sometimes they don't want to go online, like some people I know. There is some resistance, sometimes they don't want to go online, like some people I know. They prefer to do paper copies, but we're getting them, they're slowly and surely. Like I said, half and half, I'm not going to complain. I think it's a lot of forward thinking, just getting them used to the process. And once they start getting in there and understanding how quick it is, when they get their messages back and show how quick and efficient it can be, I think they'll be on board. And we will actually, as we skip further into it, we will establish a desktop of people here at City Hall so that those are not tech savvy or are confused or don't understand the process. We'll walk them through it and let them come in here and set their own account with us. Limited resources, of course, that's always going to be with growing pains, you know, just what we can use to make our process more efficient, our area more efficient. What do we need, where are our gaps are? So we're still learning that, we're still working together and communicating. With growth, more demand, more needs, staffing, you know, we do more with less. And that's sometimes good things, sometimes it's a bad thing, you know, we wear a lot of hats. But we continue moving forward to improve our productivity and our efficiency. And right now, we're working on processes to identify any gaps where we can be better at our job and make sure that we're delivering the service that we need to, to the community. And then, of course, priorities, trying to identify how we want to prioritize our daily job and our daily work that we do. And so processes with streamlining, checklist, improvements, and consistency are things we're working on. Any questions y'all might have for Frank? Yeah, I like it. Good job.
7.1, City Manager's Operational Report. Just a few brief comments, Mayor Council. LADC had their meeting last Wednesday, October 18th. And agenda items included Business Park signage, mountain development, strategy plan, incentive guidelines, and principles. We did review some previous strategic plans commissioned by the boards in 2001, 2007, and really took a look at those as maybe a starting point, not necessarily for an updated strategic plan, but certainly some definitive or defined action steps. The incentive guidelines that were last updated in May 2018 were reviewed and with a new draft and also a kind of a rating sheet in terms of the weight that the board may want to put on various economic indicators and grading prospects for possible incentives. The board also reviewed the reports on Alamo Coffee, various business meetings and surveys, and Courtyard Square Association. E&amp;D Training, Chief Cummings reports that now one half of his dispatching staff has completed their emergency medical dispatch certification. This designation is going to provide for a higher level of service that will provide us to provide instructions to the parties making a call for assistance prior to first responders arriving. The reason that the department opted to train one half at a time is because it's a fairly intensive training, requires a fair amount of time. And so knock out one half of the dispatchers and then the next half is going to be starting, I believe, this week or last week. Fire prevention, Chief Smith reports a busy fire prevention month with personnel visiting not only elementary schools, childcare, and daycare facilities. Chief noted particularly is good cooperation and enthusiasm at the Taylor Creek event where we also had personnel in Apparatus, Coppers, Co., and Kentner. Brush chipping, a really brush collection program is in the month of November, starting on October 30th and concluding December 1st. As in years past, brushing lengths of four foot or under will be collected curbside at residents. And we do a different geographical area of the city each week. You do have a flyer attached to your memo. And as well, there's no charge for brush drop-off at the Citizens Collection Center in November.
On that, family, what do you consider brush? Do you consider like small pieces of cedar, the mountain, any of that?
No lumber, no building materials, I mean, it's brushes, right, landscape, trees and shrubbery. LCRA grants are pleased to provide you reports that on November 8th, the Lions Club and the Community Gardens will receive recognition and a ceremonial check for their community enhancement projects. They're receiving funding through the LCRA, Community Development Recognition. Staff as well as elected officials are invited to attend these recognition events on November 8th, 1:15 at the Community Gardens, and then at 2:00 PM at the 580 Sports Complex to recognize the projects and document the award. Community Gardens will use funds to improve accessibility and the Lions Club will use the funds to install body weight exercise equipment at the 580 Sports Complex. Eclipse, you may notice some additional information being pushed out regarding the website and viewing and camping information. Links have been established and staff has reported immediately. We've even gotten some registrations prior to those push out. I mean, it's not, it's just a handful, but people are signing up for this stuff. And we think that with now the concerted effort to push this information out, now we've got everything lined out, we think that'll roll out in a minute. Couple of upcoming dates related to the eclipse, November 15th, we will be doing a table, top exercise primarily for public safety, public works, staff. And then we've tentatively scheduled a town hall meeting for December 13th. Ajimoto Foods North America, we continue to meet with their representatives regarding on-site improvements to grease interceptors, sampling and monitoring, continues to assess their effectiveness. We are hopeful that their consultants can formulate recommendations for us to review for long-term solution in their next 30 to 60 days. But we haven't talked about that in a while, but I just wanted to let you know that is ongoing and they are continuing to work at it. I think our next meeting is going to be November 15th. Tech dot, you did have a flyer in your packet regarding a public meeting, and I think this is a rescheduled public meeting for the 281 improvements to 21 passes and EVAN. Be November 14th, 5:30 to 7:30 at Covenant Church, New Covenant Church. They will have materials available online beginning November 6th. So if you wanted to take a look at the materials, take a look on the Tech Dot website after that date. The project proposes to widen 281 to two lanes in both directions separated by grass median. They're certainly, they don't know now exactly how much additional right of way they will need to acquire. Pleased to recognize following employees who began their City of Land Passes careers in October. Brandon Kepler, 13 years, Mike Blair, 13 years, Tom Zimple, 13 years, Tyler Gillis, 10 years, Sora Smith, seven years, Jesse Acosta, 17 years, Larry Wilson, 11 years, Jared Payne, seven years, Dan Sims, 13 years, William Young, five years, Becky Sims, 13 years, JP Harris, 25 years, Brian Hall, 11 years, and Dustin Rosso, five years. I also, related to staff, I also have some disappointing news to let you know about. Your staff team, Van Berry has submitted his intention to retire from the City of Land Passes at the end of February. That will be our loss and we certainly, he's, yeah, he's been here a while. It's certainly the city's loss, but certainly we are very happy for him. And we'll be putting our heads together about how to fill that position here in the next several weeks. Be happy to answer any questions. Thank you. 7.1, discussion of possible action regarding the award for a contract for the Utolic tree line trimming to LCRA and McCoy's tree surgery in the mountain up to exceed $186,000.
Good evening, Mayor Council. This is a yearly tree trimming contract that we deal with McCoy's. It's through the LCRA administration process. So they have an administration fee that ties in with a total amount of $185,398.8. Their administrative fee of $8,828.48 is within that. This is actually a cooperative purchasing agreement, which was, I believe, renegotiated this year through LCRA and McCoy's. The past two years, our budget's been $150,000. They do a really good job for us. If you look around at other cities in this last freeze that aren't, you know, maybe not able to maintain, you know, the tree trimming operations, it does impact their, you know, their electric service to customers. So you see some outages and some of those things, which I feel like, you know, this process helps alleviate a lot of that. As the manager's mentioned before, it does cut down on outage times if you compare, you know, years previous. So this contract is one that we typically do every year and I'll stand for any questions. One thing I might note, had a couple of notes real quick just to share with you. I think the targets start based December 11th, based on their contract, 10 weeks for the contract. But if you look at the weekly average, they're kind of averaging that on eight weeks. If you look at their proposed rates, it's broken down to eight weeks. So I think that eight to 10 week timeframe, because they run into things. If you have equipment failure, you have something break down, it gives them a little bit of buffer. But I think they're shooting for that 10-week window overall. I'll stand for any questions.
What part of town are we starting in? And how will the citizens be notified? Because they have not been very good in the past at all about letting you know when they're cutting on their oak trees.
I don't know exactly, the manager may know where we're actually going to start. The actual door tags, though, is definitely something we can make sure that we're communicating.
That would be great because they've never done it before.
Right.
Said the increase in about $36,000 from last year.
I'm sorry?
The increase in about $36,000 from last year.
Correct.
Know what that's coming from?
I think it was the renegotiation of their purchasing agreement with McCoy's. And I think too, maybe an extended amount of time.
They had to cut a couple of weeks off last year.
They did have to. Right. We didn't use all of the budget last year. I think we used about 105 of that because they did cut out, they had to leave sooner than they thought. And so we didn't use all of it last year.
How much is in our budget? Did you say 150?
186 is what we budgeted this year. The prior two years were 150.
I make a motion to award the bid to McCoy Tree Surgery and LCRA to trim trees out of the power lines of the mountain up to exceed $186,000 and to allow the city manager to execute any required documents.
Second.
Any discussion?
This is an item that we've heard about before.
That's correct. This one's actually budgeted out of 81, 510, 5350, which is electrical budget.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. Thank you.
7.2, discussion, discuss and consider.
Mayor and City Council, we received one photo action for the month of September.
Consider one is it? Take it.
All in favor?
Aye.
7.3, discussion acceptance of the third and fourth quarter Land Passes County Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center approval.
It appears I need to send you the photo next month. I've got quite a few I can plot. So as I was before you earlier this evening, if you have any questions based on the documentation that provided since presenting earlier, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have at this time.
Move to accept the Land Passes County Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center by any report this evening.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Discussion of possible action regarding a request for qualifications for Calvert Municipal Building for Landscape Design and Irrigation and Landscape Installation.
Mayor Council, this was discussed in the workshop. I would remind you that council would, what we're seeking for is a green light to move forward with advertising the RFQ. Once the contractor is selected and the contract is negotiated, we bring that back to you for approval.
Move to direct staff to advertise request for qualifications related to landscaping services to the Calvert building.
Second.
Any discussion?
One question, family. I know that's exterior, on the interior, the leaking in the roof is, I know that's not included in this. Is that a?
I believe that's been repaired.
Okay.
Yes.
And then the supplies is next, I guess?
Yes.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 7.5, discussion of possible action related to the approval of the resolution to direct staff to negotiate and finalize terms of a water supply emergency agreement.
Mayor Council, this also was discussed in workshop. In the alternative, you could also ask me to bring you back the completed contract or the 100% contract as negotiated. I think, I think we've got a 90 to 95% contract. Certainly if there was anything that was out of the, anything came in from left field, we'd certainly bring it back to you, but that's your prerogative.
I move to direct staff by resolution to negotiate and finalize terms of the water supply emergency agreement and to allow the city manager to execute any related documents. And after that, bring us the final contract.
Do you want to consider a final contract or do you just want me to bring it back to you?
I would like to consider a final contract.
Okay, very good.
Second.
Any discussion?
Any questions? Was there anything in that initial contract that you, other than what we discussed at workshop, that you were kind of concerned about or?
No, I think, and one of the reasons that we drafted the contract is so that we could make sure that our position was incorporated in that, in that agreement. So I think it did hit on the fact that it doesn't supersede a 2006 wholesale contract. It is an emergency, temporary, separate and apart from any of their responsibilities in 2006 wholesale contract, which remain.
Did see in there, it said something about $2 for 1,000 gallons. Is that in addition to?
No, that would be a separate and apart. There's another section in there that says that they bill apart from the 2006 wholesale contract. So how, what the dollars and cents work out to be is if you take less water from Central Texas, you pay less in O&amp;M. So their O&amp;M is calculated on a percentile of the water they produce and give to all their customers by the water we take. So if we take 20% of their total production and total water delivered, we pay 20% of their O&amp;M. So if that denominator goes up, then we pay less O&amp;M. We will bring it back to you. Oh, I'm sorry, you didn't vote yet. Yeah.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
7.6, discussion of possible action to consider approval or denial of the modifications to consider a request that is on 0.038 acres of land out of the Hillcrest Division, Lot 1, Lot 5, Land Passes, Texas, Land Passes County, and two family residential duplex, SF2 to commercial.
Mayor Council, this item is discussed during a public hearing. And if it's not, I'm asking to consider a motion to approve the first reading of an ordinance to rezonate 0.38 acres of land out of the Hillcrest Division, Lot 1, Lot 5, Land Passes, Texas, Land Passes County, from two family residential duplex to single, I'm sorry, SF2 to commercial.
Mayor Council, this item is discussed during a public hearing and at this time asking to consider a motion to approve the first reading of an ordinance to rezone 0.38 acres of land out of the Hillcrest Edition Lot 1, Lot 5, Landpasses, Texas, Landpasses County, from two family residential duplex to single, I'm sorry, SF2 to commercial seat.
Make a motion to approve the first reading of an ordinance to rezone 0.038 acres of land out of the Hillcrest Edition Lot 1, Lot 5, Landpasses, Texas, Landpasses County, from two family residential district duplex, SF2 to commercial seat.
Second.
Any discussion, questions?
Do we have any idea of like what the plan is over there?
It will, it'll be office building of sorts and I don't have an exact concept yet and I can, I've had a little bit of information that it might be something relating to nursing, so it might be something with a nursing home, so it'll be a good fit for that area. So whether it be a doctor's office or clinic or something possible, don't know that's going to be cool, but I haven't, like I said, I have not received the concept yet.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Seven point seven, discussion of possible action to reappoint Roland Shaw, Ryan Shahan, Steve Hudson and Sid Ball to the Landpasses Economic Development Corporation.
Good evening again, Council, this item is on the agenda to be able to reappoint these members to the LADC board. And this is an annual thing that we do every September, we have a few board members that actually have for their term expiration, so this is another board that I'm representing to you. I have a few others that I'll bring at a later time, but this evening is just the economic development board.
I'm moved to reappoint Roland Shaw, Ryan Shahan, Steve Hudson and Sid Ball to the Landpasses Economic Development Corporation.
What is, what is the term on the economic development?
Two years.
Two years? You're sure?
Yes.
Okay.
I have some there two, some there three and one that's five, but yes, I believe these are two-year terms.
All right. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Seven point eight, discussion and acknowledgement of the utilization of seized and awarded funds to purchase leased apartment equipment.
Mayor Council, thank you. This item has been placed on the agenda to advise of purchase of 32 block model 22 40 caliber generation five duty pistols with an amount of $6,430. And purchase of 26 new holsters in the amount of $3,423.40 for a total purchase amount of $9,853.40 from GT distributors in Austin, which is a buy board vendor and will use seized and awarded funds for this purchase. Like to note that the purchase price of these pistols is actually $13,696. However, due to the buyback program, they have bought 28 of these duty pistols in the amount of $7,266. This leaves a balance of the $6,230 that we're willing to spend. We haven't actually purchased them yet, they've been ordered, we have them on hand, we just wanted to advise you prior to invoicing the billing, if we want to do this, talking with the managers, not an exact using awarded and seized funds, but it is a significant amount. Pistols we are carrying right now, these are generation fours and they're probably 10 to 12 years old, without doing some research, we estimate about that amount. And these were purchased that time ago, same way, same distributor GTs in the same process. So again, it's seized and awarded funds, it's an excellent use of it in my opinion, there's nothing wrong with the ones that we're carrying, but they are aged. Numerous of them have passed and officer, officer over time as they've kind of gone. And since we have the money, it looks like it's about time and I think it's an excellent use of those funds. So we'd like to let you know we want to do it, ask for any comments, unless it's any issues, we'd like to go ahead and get, make the purchase and hopefully get them out, get them qualified and get them in use before the end of the year because we do need to go with our duty pistols one more time until January 1st.
Make a motion to acknowledge the purchase, 32 block model 22 40 caliber generation five duty pistols in the amount of $6,430. And the purchase of 26 new holsters in the amount of $3,423.40 for a total purchase amount of $9,853.40 from GT distributors in Austin. A buy board vendor with seized and awarded funds.
Second.
Any discussion?
Officers, have they been, are y'all allowing them to buy those pistols if that's an option or?
Yes, they do have an option through GTs, but this will be directly through GTs after we have purchased the units, our previous ones have been returned to them and that would be a direct purchase through GTs. Not all of them are opting to do that, there will be additional ones that have not been purchased and anyone else who thought they could go in and make that arrangement.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I've got to abstain due to professional conflicts and litigating against seizures and forfeitures.
I will do an eye vote. I know, I'm voting. Make a motion to adjourn. Second. Thank you.